I'll call this meeting to order on Monday, September the 15th, 2014. Welcome, everyone. According to my agenda, Britt Johnson, student ministries pastor at the Cumberland Community Church at 3110 Sports Avenue, is going to come forward, give our invocation, and also lead us in the pledge of flags. So would everyone please rise?
Would you pray with me? Our heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, and I thank you for bringing this group of people together on this day. I pray for the men and women in this room, and I lift these authorities to you that you have directed into place. I thank you for their love and their passion for their community, for their efforts to ensure its peaceful and prosperous livelihood. Lord, I pray that you will guide them to answers to problems with strength, wisdom, and assurance that can only come from you. Help these men and women to humbly remember that their ultimate accountability for the tasks and decisions which you have directed them to lies with you. I pray that you would give them strength to stand against anything that might sway their moral conscience. May you give each man and woman the courage to do what is right, as they serve as examples in our community of good character, integrity, and build upon the relationship of honor, respect, honesty, and trust in the city of Smyrna, Georgia. I pray that you would shield these elected leaders from all unhealthy grasping of power, but may you lead them to follow your son's example of humble servanthood as they give of themselves for the community in which they live. I pray that you bless each family and marriage represented here. Father, and may your grace and mercy be known and relished within this group of community leaders as they strive for justice and progress and morality. Father, we ask that you be with the community of Smyrna. We thank you that we can ask these things with assurance that you are in control and that we are in your hands. Father, it's in your son's name that we pray these things. Amen. Join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for those folks that knew to Smyrna, Cumberland Christian is right out Spring Road, hang a right before you get to the Burger King. So it's a good church, good group. Agenda changes. We only have one item on the agenda that will be tabled, and that is item number 4B, once we get to that. Under the mayor, we're reporting that we've got one person running for office. I don't know if Susan Thayer's here for anything other than just being here, if you want to say anything. Bob Ott is here, our commissioner. Always glad to see him. I don't see anybody else out there. Anything you want to say, Susan? I know I saw Susan at the Taste of Smyrna. Very glad to see her, and I think she was there with the Education Foundation.
Right.
Very successful event.
It was. Very good fundraiser for the Smyrna Education Foundation. Good day, I think, for everyone. I just wanted to thank everyone for their support. You've stuck with me through two rounds. We've got the final one coming up in November, and that's the critical time. I was very pleased to receive 70% of the vote in the runoff, and I hope that we can keep a high percentage. I have the educational experience in the background to bring the attention that our schools need. We've got to make some serious changes in our schools. We're losing too many young families who are choosing private schools or charter schools. We've got to bring them back into our public school community. So with your help, I'd love to be your representative. Thank you.
Bob, anything you want to say?
First off, I want to welcome you back.
Oh, yeah.
Good to see you back.
I was here last Monday night, 2:00.
About 2:00. You should welcome me back, right? Big announcement for tomorrow. There is a meeting from 3:00 until 7:00 at the Windy Hill Senior Center, and it's going to be all the different parts of the Windy Hill Road project. Windy Hill West, which is from 41 to the interchange, then the diverging Diamond Interchange at Interstate 75, and then Windy Hill East, which goes from the interchange to Powers Ferry. So it's an opportunity for the public to kind of come out and see what's being proposed and what's going to get started. Also, just kind of reminder, if people don't get my Friday update, go to my webpage and sign up, because the Atlanta Road 285 project has gotten started. You can kind of see the work on 285. And once they start working on the bridge, it's about a two-and-a-half-year project. And finally, later in the year, as stuff kind of gets started with the different projects related to transportation around the Braves Stadium and all that, the county's going to come out with an application or something similar to what you can use on your iPad or your iPhone to kind of track where the detours and the traffic is going to be. So all that information will be in the Friday update that I send out. Also, I have a TV show that's on once a month, first Monday and first Thursday. Might have to come as a guest. So, thanks.
Thank you, Bob. We'll move on into item four, which is land issues, zoning, and annexation, item A, 2014. That's 256, public hearing zoning request, Z14-022, rezoning from R15 to RAD conditional for development of three single-family homes on 0.633 acre tract, landlot 488, 2764 Hamby Street, Charter Custom Homes LLC. The applicant is here. I'm going to ask that Mr. Tammy Jo Howard is going to give our background, our finance director, both our city administrator and our assistant city administrator at a conference somewhere in the United States. If you will.
Yes. Charter Custom Homes LLC is proposing the rezoning of the subject property from R15 to RAD conditional for the development of the three new detached single-family residents. The density for the development will be 4.75 units per acre. There's no land use change from medium-density residential will be required for the rezoning, and staff does recommend approval.
Okay. The applicant here. Okay? This is a public hearing. Is anyone here that's in opposition to, or that would like to make any public comment concerning this issue? Let the record show, there is no opposition, no public comment. Mr. Ken Sudrath or Rusty Martin, whoever. And I also need to mention, Forky Welch is out of town. That's why he's not here.
All right. Good evening. Charter Customs Homes is requesting a rezoning to a piece of property on Hamby Street, 2674. This item went before the Planning and Zoning Commission on August 11, 2014, and was recommended for approval by a vote of 6-0. The property is located in landlot 488, is approximately 0.6 acres, is located in Ward 3. There's one single-family structure on site. The applicant is proposing to demolish that structure and build three new single-family homes. The zoning request specifically is from R15 to RAD conditional. There will be no land use change requests associated with this rezoning. These are the proposed vicinity maps. As you can see, on the zoning map on your left, it's surrounded by R15 to the north and south, and RAD to the west, and then CBD to the east. The future development map shows medium-density residential to the south, moderate-density residential to the north and west, and mixed use for the area to the east. This is the proposed site plan. It's three single-family homes with a front setback of 20 feet, side setback of 5 feet, and rear setback of 30. Along with this request, there are several variances. The applicant is requesting a reduction in the minimum lot size from 15,000 square feet down to nine. They're asking to reduce the lot width from 100 feet down to 50. And they're requesting to reduce the front setback from 35 feet to 20. And finally, the side setback from 10 feet to 5 feet. These setback reductions are very similar to other infill developments the council's approved over the years. This is nothing different. This is the proposed tree plan. You can see this site's got numerous trees on it and a lot of large specimen trees. They're proposing to save these five trees along the back. These are five specimen trees. In addition, there'll be four other smaller trees that they're planning on preserving. All the trees that they're proposing to preserve adds up to about 178 inches in total of tree. There's a zoning stipulation at the end that we'll go over that that'll make sense for. In addition to preserving those trees, there's a large tree at the front of the site. They're proposing to save this tree. This tree's going to be impacted by the driveway of the house on the first lot, but I just wanted you guys to note that that large tree at the front is proposing to be saved. These are the proposed home elevations. This is the subject property. These are the properties surrounding the subject property. We are recommending approval of the requested zoning for three new single-family residents at a density of 4.75 units per acre with the standard conditions outlined in the staff memo. I've eliminated the first standard conditions that are on every zoning request for this presentation, so I don't bore you guys, but we'll go over the special conditions. Special condition number nine, the development shall maintain the following setbacks, a front setback of 20, side of 5, rear of 30. Special condition number 10, the driveway shall have a minimum length of 22 feet, and that's from building face to back sidewalk. Number 11, the developer shall provide a 5-foot sidewalk and 2-foot grass buffer along Hamby Street. Number 12, the developer shall be required to bore across Hamby Street for water service. Number 13, the developer will require to install a sanitary sewer main extension from Powder Springs Street to serve the development. The elevations are the responsibility of the developer. Number 14, the developer shall be allowed to count any tree density over and above the city's minimum required density towards specimen recompense provided specimen trees number 7, 8, 9, and 13 are preserved as shown on the tree plan submitted and dated 7/11/2014. Should any of these trees not be preserved, the developer shall be required to meet the specimen tree recompense requirements. Number 15, the developer shall plant at least one 4-inch caliber tree on each lot along Hamby Street. If the 42-inch hardwood on lot number 3 is able to be preserved, lot 3 shall be exempt from this requirement. Number 16, the rezoning is contingent upon the site plan provided. Number 17, the applicant shall be bound to the elevations provided in the zoning packet. With that said, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Melwitz.
Thank you. Actually, one of the questions that I wanted clarification on, you did just that, and that was with regards to if there is a tree that is designated as a tree that's to be saved in the tree plan, and it doesn't end up making it, is the builder required to pay recompense into the fund? And it sounds like that answer is yes.
Yeah. Basically, you know, these are conceptual plans at this point. Should we get to plan review stage, and one of those trees is not able to be saved and must be removed, then the applicant will be required to follow the full requirements of the city's tree ordinance.
Thank you, and I appreciate how thorough the arborist's report is. I mean, that's one of the things that you notice first about this lot, and I imagine it's something that contributes to the desirability and the marketability of this lot, is the fact that there are several beautiful trees. I know one of the most massive ones is in very poor health and definitely needs to come down. And while it's sad to see a big tree like that go, it's a tree that is not healthy, and so it does not need to remain in place because it is a liability for the current owners and for the future owners of those properties. But I appreciate how thorough that the arborist's study was, because it is something that is the first thing you think of when people think of this lot.
Any questions? Any other questions of Rusty? Thank you, Rusty. If the Charter Homes, I'm sorry, Charter Custom Homes, you want to step forward, identify yourself, and Scott, does any need to be sworn in? Okay. Just tell us who you are.
Sure. My name is Todd Wrigley. I'm an architect and builder with our small family design-build firm. I think Rusty did a great job in presenting a lot of the information. I guess the few things I'd like to just say is that, you know, we've been in constant dialogue with the city planners, engineers, and public works for this project, in a dialogue to establish what's required from us and what we would need to do in large part because of the bringing the sewer to the property, and working with him, working with Rusty about the trees, and working with the engineer, Eric Randall, with the project, because it's, part of it is subdividing the project. It's my understanding that it throws it into the legal category of a subdivision, which in this case, you know, any project or any property that you do that subdivides it into smaller lots regardless of size, throws it into that category. And part of that is the requirement of a detention pond, but we are in conversation and future conversations with Mr. Randall about how to approach the stormwater management. That there's a detention pond, it's not required for this, you know, for several reasons, one being that the size doesn't necessitate it, the topography of the project is flat and runs in all directions. So, you know, there's been proposals made, and part of the reason why there's going to be the dialogue is that with the capability of our firm being architect and builders, we can design custom homes, and the plans and elevations presented are very much representational of what we would like to build, the plan and the elevations, but, you know, we'd like the flexibility of potentially, you know, modifying it to the program of a future homeowner. So coming up with a custom stormwater management plan for each house that accommodates the requirements for Mr. Randall.
If I could ask a question. When you talk about modifying the elevations, you're still talking about staying within the spirit of the elevations presented tonight. You're not going to build something that looks like falling waters.
Right, exactly. No, it's, as an architect who prides himself on design, and I'm, you know, I love these elevations. It's true to that concept. It's true to the neighborhood. It wouldn't benefit from an economic standpoint or the neighborhood standpoint, but it's within that, and I think it has the approval, you know, before being approved. It has to be approved by the city. So, no, it would be very much to the benefit aesthetically and keeping with the aesthetics and the vernacular of the neighborhood. But, and all that said, I'd just like to say, you know, I have a lot of appreciation for the work that was done and the meeting with everybody and, you know, the open reception, the dialogue, and the professionalism that went along with this project and the application. And I thank you.
Thank you. I'd also like to comment that this has been a very positive experience so far. I like what you said about the vernacular of the neighborhood. That's a term I'll probably steal and use again. It's a good one. But I know that you have been very forthcoming with current residents and the adjacent properties. I appreciate that. I know it's been a good dialogue. They understand what they're in store for as neighbors, and they know that you're going to do your best to be a good neighbor to them as this construction process continues, because this is a pretty dense neighborhood that you're coming into. And I think that what you're doing is definitely in keeping with the spirit and with what has happened with redevelopment in this community over the past 10 years.
Thank you.
Any questions? Susan, give me, okay. Mr. Melwitz.
Yeah, I'll just comment that, again, I mentioned the neighbors who live in the immediate vicinity, and I've spoken with people who...
I already did, at the very beginning.
He did.
You should pay attention.
Ah, lost my train, I thought.
Great thing.
The...
Well, I asked if there was any public comments.
No, but in talking about the, but this is, that's a good segue, because we're talking about the public and the HOAs and the residents who are in the adjacent area, adjacent, they are, I've talked to them as recently as today. They are in support of this project. They appreciate how forthright everyone has been during this process. And again, you know, they want to make sure that no one's going to be banging at 8:00 at night, and I don't think that will be a problem. And so at this time, I'm comfortable making a motion to approve item 4A, which is item 2014-256. This was a public hearing for zoning request, C14-022. It's a rezoning from R15 to RAD conditional for the development of three single-family homes. It's a 0.633 acre tract, landlot 488. The address is 2764 Hamby Street, and the applicant is Charter Custom Homes LLC.
Second.
Motion second to approve this rezoning request. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 6-0. I've known Stanley Cox. He grew up, he's sitting back here quietly, and he grew up in our neighborhood as well as I did, and a lot of good memories of his folks living there, and on the corner was Reese's Grocery, and he was about the same size that he is today, that he was when we were growing up. Good family, and see how easy that was, Stanley? Thank you all so much. It is approved 6-0. Item 4B, under land issues, zoning, and annexation, as I mentioned at the beginning, 2014, 295. This item will be tabled until the meeting of October 6. Not sure if anybody's here that's for that item, but it is going to be tabled, and I will defer that to Ms. Susan Wilkinson to table till October 6.
Thank you. Is there anybody here that came here for this item tonight? We are going to be tabling it to October the 6th, so two weeks from tonight. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to table item 4B, 2014-295, zoning request, Z14-021, for rezoning from R15 and RTD to RTD conditional for the development of a 49-unit townhome subdivision, 13.203 acre tract, landlots 342 and 379. This is at 619 Church Road, Venture Homes Incorporated, to be tabled to October 6, 2014, mayor and council meeting.
Second.
And a motion second to table till October 6, 2014. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 6-0. Item 5 is previous licenses, we have none. Item 6 is formal business, A 2014-301, approval agreement with the county, I'm sorry, approval of the agreement with Country Park Homeowners Association in the amount of $49,131. The background.
Yes. This is in agreement with the Country Park Homeowners Association. It's for a refund of overcharges, and it's being brought to council based on the dollar amount.
I guess that'd be under Ms. Terry. Another one, she's chairman of finance and administration.
Yes, I'm not sure what additional background Mr. Cochran would like to give any.
No, I don't have anything that hadn't already been said. This is just to resolve the issue of an overcharge.
And just for information, Ms. Bluestein, who is a resident of that subdivision of homeowners, is also an officer. She is not here. She's reclusive herself from the vote, so.
At this time, I would then like to move to approve item 6A, item 2014-301. This is approval of the agreement with Country Park Homeowners Association in the amount of $49,131. Second.
Motion second to refund the Country Park Homeowners Association, the amount of $49,131. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 5-0. Item 7 is commercial building permits, we have none. Item 8 is consent agenda. Please read the consent agenda for council's approval.
Yes. Item A is approval of the mayor and council meeting minutes for September 2, 2014. Item B is mayor and council award, RFP 14-016, Spring Road Bridge Repair to the lowest bidder E&amp;D Contracting Services for $788,562, and to authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. And item C is approval of modification to personnel policy, EMP 7-0, overtime and compensatory time, and to authorize the mayor to sign any related documents.
Move approval.
I'm sorry.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor the most. It's 5 to 1. Doesn't show me who've... Oh, yeah, okay. One of these, and I'll just, that's approved 5 to 1. But one of these items that was brought to us tonight was, we had a discussion, I think there was some concern about some additional information, so it's approved 5 to 1. Item 9 is committee reports. We'll start tonight with Mr. Ron Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll call on our fire chief, Acre, to give an update from the fire department, and standing by for police would be Deputy Chief Brown.
Good evening, everybody. Just wanted to let you know that today, we celebrated the retirement of Lieutenant Howard Betts, who retired after 31 very successful and positive years of employment with the city of Smyrna Fire Department, so we certainly wish him well in his retirement. Also, the six new employees that I introduced to the council last month, I'm proud to say are all on shift and working in the suppression division. One of the two new engines, Engine 2, at Fire Station 2 on Concord Road, is in service and doing very well, and the subsequent second engine will be in service by the end of this week at Station 3. And one last reminder, we're two weeks away from Ready Smyrna's whole community preparedness efforts for our fall Prepare-Thon campaign. Again, on Sunday, September 29, we're asking that our faith-based organizations or churches have some type of disaster preparedness drill, either conversation or exercise on that Sunday. And then on Wednesday, October 1, we're asking for all schools, public and private Smyrna businesses, assisted living facilities, daycare facilities, to join us when they hear the monthly siren warning test on that Monday or Wednesday, October 1, to join us in a community-wide tornado drill. And for more information on that, if you're interested, you can visit readysmyrna.com. And that was all that I had.
I don't know if Mr. Fennel's going to mention the award that we received, national award.
I know in your work over the last few years in emergency management, that you've done a great job in building us up to this Ready Smyrna campaign, but the fact that you put Smyrna on the national stage with the program, allowing us to be acknowledged by FEMA as the launch city in America, and you just returned from a trip where you were able to receive a reward. You want to tell the public what that award was and why it was so important to us?
It's a small little trip to the White House, but it really is, it was a fantastic opportunity. We were advised that the city of Smyrna Emergency Management Agency received something that FEMA calls the John D. Solomon Whole Community Preparedness Award. It's the top award that FEMA gives out annually. We shared it this year with the city of New York, and just as...
A little town up north somewhere.
Just a little town. You may have heard of it. Couple hundred thousand people live there. But we were invited and got to take part in an awards...
What building was that you went to, again?
It was the White House.
The White House. I'm just making sure the public...
And I'm not quite sure, you know, people asked me... And, and I'm not quite sure, you know, people ask me, were you in the, the west wing, the east wing? You know, we, we entered through some secured gate, back door, went down tunnels, up, down, left, right, you know, no windows. I have no idea where we were. It was somewhere inside the building.
So, it's like a casino in Vegas, basically.
It was, except for, I did see one clock. But, but I appreciate you mentioning that. It was a fantastic opportunity, um, to go up. I didn't get a chance to meet the president, uh, unfortunately, but that was just fine. We got some good pictures with the FEMA director, Craig Fugate, and, um, you know, unfortunately, I couldn't bring, uh, a certificate of award home because FEMA didn't have them ready. But, they promised, they promised to have that ready and have it expedited to us as soon as possible.
Well, Chief, on behalf of all the citizens of Smyrna, and I know the city council, we congratulate you and the team that has made this possible and brought recognition and honor to the City of Smyrna. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Chief Brown. Smyrna Police Never Sleeps.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of council, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. I will be very brief. I just want to mention a couple of things. First of all, the third session of the Smyrna Police Department Citizens Police Academy began last Monday night, and continues again this Monday night. Um, I had the opportunity to address that group of individuals last Monday night, and I know that they're in for a very informative and educational time. Uh, they were all very excited. As the last two sessions, uh, those folks have, uh, given us a great deal of feedback in how much they enjoyed the Citizens Police Academy. And, uh, so I know they're looking forward to completing that course, uh, of instruction and getting to do a lot of different things that, that normally you wouldn't be able to do, ride-alongs and actually go to the range, things of that nature. So, uh, we're glad to have them in this third session of the police academy. The next thing is that across the Atlanta area and here in Smyrna, car break-ins are on the increase, and we're experiencing, uh, an increased number of breaking into vehicles. Uh, I would like to remind all citizens, if they would please, to lock their vehicles, secure them every time they leave the vehicle. A number of these break-ins, in fact, the majority of them, are actually items taken out of vehicles that have been left unsecured. So, just want to remind everybody, we've got that vehicle, even if it's parked in your driveway, uh, or even if it's parked in your garage, if you leave the door open or whatever, make sure you secure the vehicle. It really make a big difference. It's a deterrent, it makes the thief want to move on to the next one they can find that may be unsecured. So, I appreciate if y'all would do that. Thank you. And the last thing is that, as most of you know, yesterday was a very long tedious day. Uh, there's some people I feel like I must thank. If you've watched the news in the last 24 hours, you, you know what's taking place, so I won't go over all that. But there's some people that I, I have to thank. And first of all, I want to thank the men and women of the Smyrna Police Department, and especially those assigned to the special operations unit and the SWAT team. I was there with them all day. They worked professionally, tirelessly, for 15, 16 hours yesterday. Also want to thank the fire department, the Smyrna Fire Department, and all their efforts and cooperation, and things that they did for us in providing water, uh, other food, things of that nature. They were an extraordinary help. I want to thank Cobb County Sheriff's Office SWAT team for all their assistance. Uh, our officers had been out a long time, deployed, uh, for this situation, and needed some relief. And I want to particularly thank the Cobb County Sheriff's Office SWAT team and their invaluable assistance. The Cobb County Police Department Bomb Squad for the use of their robots, and DePaulding County Sheriff's Office Bomb Unit for the use of their robots. Um, everyone worked extremely well together, and everyone was very professional, and I appreciate all their assistance greatly. And I'm very proud of our department, y'all should be as well. And of course, our thoughts and prayers go to the families who are affected, and, uh, hope that their healing begins very soon. Thank you.
Deputy Chief Brown.
Yes.
How old was the baby that you found as a sweet surprise in that nightmare?
Five months.
Oh.
And yes, it was.
Yeah.
That was the bright spot.
Yeah, it was the bright spot.
Yes.
I just hope it does well.
And, and I think it probably will. So, just, uh, having met some of the families involved in everything.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank y'all. Appreciate it.
Chief, in addition to the work, uh, that you've been doing that are more high-profile, I want to thank, uh, you and the team for the work with the Metro Drug Squad and the others who were actually tackling some big issues in a quiet way.
Yes.
And, uh, we're making some inroads. The DUI Task Force has been an outstanding addition, and has brought an awful lot more safe, uh, aspects to our roadways, and I appreciate that, and I hope you pass that along to the team that we do appreciate what is happening there to remedy both a speed problem and a drug problem and an alcohol problem on our streets.
I absolutely will. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. How are you, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. White Linnick.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to thank the members of the Jesse Coleman Council of the PTA for inviting me to speak to their meeting on 4 September. They do a great job in our schools across the area, and we appreciate everything that they do to make our schools and students successful. Uh, I also want to acknowledge and thank Keep Smyrna Beautiful for their shredding event they had Saturday morning, um, over at the Eileen Wolf Center. Uh, I know I and a number of us and a whole lot of citizens took boxes of paper over there for free shredding, and I'm grateful for that opportunity and them putting on the event. Everybody there looked tired, and that meant they were working hard, and I appreciate that, uh, again, on a Saturday morning. Uh, also want to acknowledge the, the new McDonald's on South Cobb Drive and the Kroger Shopping Center had their grand opening event on Saturday. A number of us were there, and, uh, we appreciate that business owner choosing to reinvest back in the City of Smyrna. That's a good thing. Um, Smyrna First United Methodist Church is having a blood drive tomorrow from 2 to 7. Uh, I'll be there getting stuck. I hope to give blood and not for drinks for a vampire convention, but anyone else who would like to drop by, I'm sure my wife, the parish nurse, would, would love to have you. Um, 2 to 7 tomorrow, Tuesday, Smyrna First United Methodist Church. Uh, I'll, I'll be with the Vikings Glen Homeowners Association this Saturday, and Westchester Commons Homeowners Association on Saturday for October to meet with those folks and, uh, spend time with them. That's always, uh, an enjoyable opportunity. Uh, finally, I want to note the passing of one of Smyrna's most distinguished citizens, uh, last week, and that was Raymond Reed. Uh, when I became active in Smyrna politics and went into office in the late 80s, Raymond was kind of one of those legendary figures that people talked to me about. And at the time, he was a constituent. Um, Raymond was born, uh, September of, uh, 1916 here in Smyrna. Uh, after graduating from college, he served in the US Navy in World War II. Uh, the obituary mentioned he started his legal practice in the Marianas Islands of the Pacific Theater, helping service members with various issues. Uh, he came back, became very active in his community, served on a number of local boards. Uh, he was a, kind of a quiet guy. He was always sort of smiling when you saw him, and he didn't do a whole lot of things to call attention to himself, but I know that he was very, very helpful to a lot of people in kind and considerate ways without trying to draw any attention to what he did to help them. Uh, along the way, he served as the Cobb County Attorney for eight years. Um, he also served eight years in the Georgia General Assembly, representing Smyrna in the House of Representatives. Probably his most notable achievement was he co-authored a bill that was eventually passed after several years, that had the net effect of removing the hoods from the Ku Klux Klan. And that was, from the old timers that I've talked with, a very significant event in Georgia. There was a very active group, and Raymond felt in his heart that everybody should be treated fairly, and if you were going to run around and kind of act crazy, then you ought at least have to show your face and let people know who you were. And that was just kind of his sort of country boy thinking, and it makes a lot of sense to me. Uh, that was a courageous step, uh, back in the 60s when he did it, and, uh, we tend to lose sight of, you know, our pioneers along the way that made possible the world that we live in and enjoy today. Uh, Raymond and, uh, his wife Mary were, again, great citizens, did a lot, had a great family. Uh, we extend our sympathies and wishes to all of them, and, uh, thank Raymond for his many years of service to the people of this area. With that, I yield.
Ms. Susan Wilkinson.
Thank you. Um, I would like to ask Steve Ciaccio from the Parks and Recreation Department to come give us his report. And while he's coming up here, I want to just thank him and his staff for what a wonderful job they do in our parks, and, um, every Tuesday at Food Truck Tuesday, and, and then the events in the downtown, and they really do a very good job, and thank you.
Appreciate it, Councilwoman. Uh, just a couple of things. Uh, the, the department's working on making preparations for a couple of new playgrounds in the city. Uh, Cobb Park, which is across the street from Campbell High School, I'm referring now to the far end of the park by the big pavilion, we will be placing, uh, the playground on that end of the park in the upcoming future with the Community Development Block grant monies, federal monies. And I'm hopeful that over in, uh, Ms. Bluestein's ward, a playground as well. Um, like to think that would be there in about December. So, those are some of the things we're working on presently. That's it. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. And I would like to call, um, Mary Moore from the library, if, if she is here. I know she was going to be late, but...
I don't think she's here.
Is she not here? Okay. Um, okay, well, um, with that, I yield.
Ms. Terry Nolowicz.
Thank you. Yes, Community Relations does not have a report tonight, but I would like to invite Toni Jo Howard to put her finance hat back on for now and give a quick report from finance.
Yeah, just really quickly. Um, we are currently undergoing our FY14 annual audit, so we will be bringing those results to council shortly. And also, just wanted to make sure everybody knows that we have mailed out our property tax billing, so make sure that you've gotten that in the mail, um, and those are due back to us by November 17th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I know, mine landed in my mailbox this past weekend, and I imagine I am not alone. There is, um, nothing else to report tonight for Ward 3.
Ann Kirk, have you got something, or you just?
Yes, and it was for, for the gentleman from the fourth. If Ann Kirk could come up and talk about Keep Smyrna Beautiful, please.
Quick things. We have two more Saturdays of the fresh market, so please don't miss out. We still have great produce coming up, and, uh, we're getting new vendors all the time, and they're bringing special canned goods now to, of their preserved things from the market. So, don't miss out. It's from 8 until noon at the First Baptist Church. We'd like to thank Iron Mountain for the, their shredding services. That's about $2,000 worth of labor that they donate to us twice a year. We had 192 cars come through, and we collected over 10,000 pounds of paper. So, it was a good event, and thank you for your kind words. Um, and if you missed it, because I know that people have already called me saying, "Oh, I missed it," Keep Cobb Beautiful will be having one on November 15th. I don't have all the details yet, but, uh, I will get those out later. Our Rivers Alive Event will be October the 4th. If you'd like to volunteer, please contact my office. And the Junkles are coming in on October the 1st to the recycling center. There will be 1250 for a bag of 50. This is our annual Junkle Gold Rush Sale, and, uh, we're already getting calls about that too, so I wanted to let everybody know. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ann. With that, I yield.
Ms. Andrea Bluestein.
Uh, Community Development does not have a report this evening. Uh, I just want to make a couple of comments. Um, if you haven't been over to the new McDonald's, it really is a nice place. I'm not, I'm not 100% sold on McDonald's, but it was, it looked like they were having a pretty good day on their opening day on Saturday. And at the rate they're building at the corner of, um, Atlanta Road and Spring Road, I think Zack's Bees is going to be open very soon. Uh, other than that, we've got, um, Belmont underway, probably Junkle hopefully will at least give us some plans on what they're going to do, um, before the end of the year. And from what I understand, you know, that'll be the early part of next year, which is fine. Um, just very pleased that, um, Mr. Halpern has decided to build out both ends of, of the, of the city. I think it'll be a great, um, thing once everything is put in place. So, and with that, I yield.
Ms. Melanie Pritchett.
I have no report tonight, sir.
Next item on the agenda is show cause hearing, but I'm going to move down to citizens' input. We've got one person that signed up for that, Alec Bakri, 3459 Shawnee Trail. His, his topic is comments. You can come forward at this time.
My comment tonight is on an article appeared in, uh, the Marietta Journal on Sunday last month on, uh, the Hickory Lakes. I've driven up and down South Cobb Drive, going up to Windy Hill, uh, all weekend, looking hard at the businesses, their appearances, et cetera. Also, getting on Old Concord down to Smyrna Powder Springs and taking that back out to Hickory Lakes. All the businesses along that corridor up to Windy Hill, down to Smyrna, uh, Smyrna Powder Springs, subdivisions coming out, very neat, pristine, all the way back out to Windy Hill. I see no empty buildings, places that need any work. All of them are full, all the way up to that corner. That corner is absolutely solid with the businesses and nothing empty. And to read the article stating, um, the city manager says that bought the property to redevelop that side of Smyrna, I can't see where there's any redevelopment that needs to be done. Again, for those reasons that I saw, I could see in 20, 30 years that being the same way it is with the subdivisions all landscaped well, the backsides are entries, et cetera. And also comment by a council person saying it has the potential to be transformative. Transformative to what? Can't quite understand that statement. And making the statements we can base decisions on long-term investments. Smyrna is a business. The only difference is, the taxpayers are the clients, and there's where we rely on the city to run this business because they have our money to be used wisely. When it says that we can make decisions based on long-term, that has to be defined. When you're talking long-term, is it five, 10 years, 20, 30? Again, I can see that whole side. Unless you drive down Old Concord, Hickory Lakes in there with all the trees that they have now, you wouldn't notice it. So, it's, uh, to see that since we're talking on Hickory Lakes, have five houses on one lot, on one acre, I'm sorry, why would someone spend $350,000 to share less than a quarter acre when you can pick up a nice house in Smyrna for $250,000 and have 3,000 square feet versus 2,000 square feet? I see nothing wrong with Windy Hill's corridor over there, and I don't understand why we're, uh, defining, again, long-term, why there's any changes that need to be done. Thank you.
We will go back to, uh, item 10, show cause hearing, A 2014-254, appeal of a denial of application for alcohol service permit for Universe Winston. Is she here? Okay, if you'll step forward. Uh, you can give us the background, ma'am. Do you have it? Um, Mr. Cochran? Do we not have the background on that?
Uh, sure. Uh, just, brief background is that, uh, Ms. Winston has applied for a, uh, permit to sell alcohol by the drink. She works at a restaurant, a local restaurant, and, um, she has a, uh, an issue that has made her ineligible under our ordinance, um, but she has appealed that to you all, and you all in your discretion and our, under our ordinance can hear her, um, her, her case and decide whether or not to, um, to kind of basically grant a waiver and, and allow her the license. So, that's kind of the background.
Okay, if, um, let me sure, let's, let's...
You first, I think it was two year, two weeks ago that we last met, and I believe that...
You first, I think it was two weeks ago that we last met, and I believe at that time you had a pending action with the city of Marietta. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Has that been resolved?
It actually hasn't. I go to court the 25th of September at 1:30 PM, and my lawyer is going to try to drop my charge, which I'm doing it as a dismiss, or if that does not go through, to go to a diversion program for six months, and it takes two months until I would get approval for diversion.
What was your court date again?
It's the 25th.
Of September?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Ms. Cochran, before, do we need to have her sworn in, or?
Yeah, yeah, for hearing. Yeah, we should do that.
Okay.
Yeah, let me do that real quick.
The 15th, so that's 10 days. I understand you are currently working?
Yes, I am. I'm still on...
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Scott, would you recommend that we postpone till after the hearing, or?
Well, it's up to you. Let me first say that we talked for a minute out in the parking lot, I mean, out in the hallway, and she's, "You're sick," right? You don't feel good. So that's, if you wonder why she's kind of lethargic, that's why. It's up to y'all. You know, I wasn't at the original hearing, which I think Jeffrey covered that. It's up to you. Your hearing is scheduled, your court date is scheduled when?
The 25th.
Why don't you tell them whether or not you think they should continue this, your court date is over. Just what's your thought on that?
I really need it for my job. I'm missing, I'm missing days of work to come here for my liquor license, for my permit, and I need it for my job. It was actually at a manager's request that I have it. Everybody in the restaurant is supposed to have their liquor license, and he's been very, very lenient with me on me getting it, and I'm, he's basically waiting till I have it, and I keep coming to court, and I just keep getting denied for it. And I understand, you know, the circumstances and the policy that I have to abide by, but I really do need it, and I just keep coming back, and it's the same thing.
Well, I'm inclined to make a motion to give it to her. However, can we also put something in there about if the court date does not go well in Marietta, that it would be suspended, or what?
You'd have to define what you mean by that, if you...
Well, I mean, that it would not be a valid...
Well, what I meant was what you mean by the court date didn't go well.
I hate to keep putting this young lady off, because I know she needs the job.
I think I understand what Ms. Bluestein's saying, is that for some reason, things turned out different than what she anticipated.
Yeah. We just need to figure out what that is. What do we say? Would say if she ends up being convicted, or?
Yeah, if she's convicted of the felony, or that it would be suspended at that point.
We could, if you wanted to, just thinking out loud, which is always dangerous, but if you wanted to, you could, you could move to grant the license with the condition that she give you some kind of notice of what happened at the hearing in Marietta. So after whatever happens in Marietta happens, you would have to come back and notify the city. You know, you send a notice, you know, just send proof, say, "Here's what happened to me." And if, so that's number one, the condition of your license, and I guess in the second thing would be that if there's a conviction that she would, her license would be contingent also on her not being convicted. She could have those two, if you wanted to.
Okay. Universe, would you agree to that?
So if I...
Would you agree to, if we give you, if we vote now to give you the license back, but if there is a problem with the hearing in Marietta, if you're convicted of that, that you would come back to us and...
And inform me of what happened?
Would you agree to that?
Yeah, I will.
Okay.
Would I write a letter, or how would I go by doing that?
I'm sorry.
Would I write a letter to the mayor of council stating what happened in court, or do I come talk to somebody?
Yeah, I'd say you would notify the city clerk, because she's the record custodian, so they could put it in the record, you know?
She'll help you be able to write whatever you need to write to correspond back with us, or not with us so much as it is the department.
Or have your attorney notify us, you know?
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Linica.
Yeah, Mr. Cochran, I got a question, I guess, for you procedurally. If her case is adjudicated as either some sort of first offense or pretrial diversion, is that technically considered a conviction, or how do we need to word this?
No, it's, neither of those would be convictions. Both of those, first offender is by definition not a conviction, and a diversion is a diversion from the criminal process, so there's no conviction there either.
So maybe what we should specify would be, in either of those two cases, her license would continue to be valid, but in any other situation, her license would be immediately suspended?
Yeah, I mean, I thought the cleaner way to do it would just, was to say that if there's a conviction of the felony charge, because there are often times when charges are reduced from felonies to misdemeanors, and sometimes charges are just dismissed. They're null products. You kind of cover all those scenarios. If you say that if there's a conviction of the felony, would you say, you'd say the license is issued, but it's conditional. It's conditioned on her not being convicted of the felony that's presently charged. And if, so then anything less than that wouldn't affect the license. That was kind of the thought process.
That makes sense, and I could support that plan.
Okay.
Ms. Winston, you understand why we're spending a lot of time and being very careful about this. It's the franchise to serve alcohol as a privilege. It's not a right, it's a privilege, and a very select few do that, and the establishment and the individual are held accountable for their actions in handling alcohol. We want to protect the public and the public safety is the main aspect of why we are very careful about who we issue a license to. Do you understand that?
Yes, I understand.
Okay, we're just trying to be very careful. That's why we're having this discussion, to make sure that we make the right decision to protect the public. Thank you.
Yeah. Ms. Winston, just to follow up on that, I agree. I appreciate you speaking with me earlier this week. I was the one who called you. But it's very important, and I know you're young, and we've all, you know, made various mistakes in our lives, and you can get past that, and you can make decisions to change your life and go a different direction. But if we entrust you with this responsibility, Councilman Fennel's right, we're entrusting you really with the license for the store. I mean, if there's a violation, people can go to jail, the restaurant can lose its license. It's a very serious thing, and we're depending on you by being here tonight and saying you understand all these things, to know the difference between what's right and what's not right, and what you can do and what you can't do. And if there's any doubt in your mind, I mean, I'm telling you, now it'd be better to walk away than risk another incident and have that problem maybe take you away. A very serious responsibility. I just want to make sure you understand that.
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Okay, Mr. Universe, we want you to do well. So with that in mind, I am going on, in the matter of the 2014-254, I am going to make a motion to approve a service permit for you. However, if you are convicted of the felony when you appear before the court in Marietta, then we will need to revisit this and possibly suspend it, or suspend it, depending on what they come up, if they keep it as a felony, or if they reduce it, we'll see what happens, okay?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for giving me it.
Mr. Cochran, just a little guidance there at the end. Shouldn't it be that should a conviction occurred, be automatically revoked?
Yeah, if conviction of the felony, if that occurs, then it's revoked, and you can revisit it then, ask then, come back in and have another hearing on that, but it would be revoked. And also, you know, you've got an obligation to notify the city clerk with what happened, and she'll give you her contact info, you know, but you just need to, you know, to follow up after it happens and tell her what happened. All right, we'll be looking, too, but you just need, that's an independent thing. See, that's the way that I thought. It makes sense. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, that's fine.
As long as we understand that, it's been, Mr. Cochran, is, yep, yep.
Yeah.
That is, we'll make that part of the motion. So we've got a motion and a second, I guess.
I made the motion.
Motion by Mr. Linica. Motion by, I'm sorry, Ms. Bluestein, seconded by Mr. Linica.
No, Mr. Linica.
I'm sorry. Okay. Got a motion, second. I'm sorry. All right, is there any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved, 6-0. So good luck, and go home, go to bed, take some NyQuil or something.
Thank you.
Hope you get to feeling better. Okay, thank you. It's approved.
Well, when we see you again, we want you to be all smiles.
You'll give her a card tearing to tell her she can get in touch with you. We have another item, 10B, is an appeal of a denial of application of alcohol service permit for, I guess it's Navy Musumil. That's to be postponed until October the 20th. Those are the last two items. We've already done our citizens' input, but I was just giving a note about a few minutes ago from Rebecca Lusa. I'm gonna let her speak. She did not know she had to sign up, and she's been here. So I'm gonna let you come forward and give her the time. If you'll tell us who you are and where you live at and the comments that you'd like to make.
Okay. Hi, I'm Rebecca Lusa. I live at 4056 Norton Place, the Heritage Mill subdivision right before you go over the bridge. I moved here in 1984. I first bought a home at 810 Green Forest Drive off of Lake Drive behind the McDonald's, the Cedar and Fieldstone Home. Then I needed a bigger home because the family grew. My daughter attended King Springs Elementary School. She went to Griffin, and she went to prom with her nephew and the whole group, but that's okay. She went to, Jessica did go to Campbell. She was in the IB program. She flipped out of the IB program so she could go to Los Angeles. She came back, decided that being just pretty face wasn't going to work, so she double majored at Georgia Tech. She's now, in a few minutes, interviewing at E, Entertainment, as a hostess position, and she's in Let's Be Cops, a movie. So she plans to come back and do what Julia Roberts wouldn't do, and that is her goal. Flipping forward to that, because that's not even really what I wanted to talk about, I came to the meeting, prior to this meeting, about the Hamby Street, and the reason that I did that is, and also bought a Little Reed Street, 2952, over here on Ward 3. I own a condo over there that my neighbor's mother lives in, which she will stay there until she goes into an assisted living. But I, and I'll talk fast because I know my minutes are going to be up. We've had a school issue. We always will have a school issue, and there's still people that are moving out, but we have something else that's more current that I think, and I would very much beg you to think about. I was under the impression that we wanted to keep our people, and I need to downsize now. My house is too big, so where do I go? And I need a master on the main. So I've been driving around Smyrna and going to all the different places, trying to figure out where I can go, what I can do, and I don't even mind spending $350,000, but I'm not going to spend $450,000. And I do want the small piece of land. I don't want a pool anymore, and I don't want a big yard. But when I drive around in Smyrna, I have gone into the weekly homes that are over Parkview or Parkside or whatever, and I've talked to them about how they're building in front of the new elementary school. They're doing houses, they're going to be 154 houses from $200,000 up, and on the other side will be luxury apartments, and they hope to have restaurants and stuff. But then I look out across the street, and I'm wondering why we can't keep our restaurants and our little downtown area going over here, so I'm concerned a little. But my point is, two people in my neighborhood have had to move to Powder Springs for senior-type communities. I'm not asking for a senior community, because I will never be in a place that I have a homeowners association, again, like my 2952 Reed Street. But we, I thought we were supposed to be known as the best place to retire. Was that like maybe five or six or eight years ago? Wasn't that, didn't I hear that happen when we did the swim thing in the community center and the library? So I very much want us, if there's any extra land anywhere, if there's anything we can come up with, that if we build homes that have the master on the main, more parents are coming back to their children until they go into assisted living, and we're missing a market. Yes, we need the young professionals, but by having these apartments, luxury apartments in front of an elementary school, that you question your middle school and your high school. If you're smart, you're okay. My son wasn't smart. I drove him two hours a day to Riverwood High School because his pants were sagging at Griffin Middle School, and by the time he graduated, his same pants he wore in middle school, he was wearing in high school, and he pulled them all the way up. We do have a problem here with our schools. That's a fact. Everybody knows that.
Oh, you got 19 seconds, 18, 17.
Okay, well, I just, we've got to do something about the senior thing. We have a terrific opportunity between your pool, the community center, the library. I walk around, I walk around these little ones, the first ones that we're building in the square. I've been in them, but there are only one-car garage, and they don't have masters on the main.
I want to, I'd like to respond with a couple of things. One is that I think that there's, the restaurants in the village have actually done really well, and I think but for one that had a death, and that's why it changed hands a couple of times.
I knew that.
It's been the same, you know, the sushi restaurant, Atkins Park, Zuka Vintage Tavern, they've been, they've been in the same hands, and they were able to thrive and expand even with the recession.
I mean, the empty, the empty places that we have.
Right, but those weren't restaurant spaces, but regardless.
I beg your pardon.
But it's that one.
It's the vacancies that I'm looking at.
Right, but again, we're at 100% occupancy, but with, I guess, one thing I wanted to let you know, the main thing was that part of Belmont, not all of the pods have been accounted for yet, and one of them has one of the uses that is approved and that's been talked about for the duration of the project is for senior housing, like you're mentioning. But I think that for what you're looking for, what they are going to be building over there at Belmont might fit the bill pretty well in terms of price point and lot size and masters on main.
I don't want to be that close to Windy Hill. And I'm telling you, South Cobb Drive, I totally disagree with that man just a few minutes ago about the look of South Cobb Drive.
Listen, thank you so much for coming, and at least you know now what to do the next time you want to, yeah. Here's, would I say this? I mean, we have talked about masters on the main and seniors, and, you know, to me, government ought not dictate what somebody does with their property, but that issue comes up a lot. Can you get some masters on the main? And I don't know if it's just that they don't, they're just not a good marketing, or people are not, but I agree. I've got, I'm on one level, and as we get older, those steps get to be pretty gruesome.
I want to retire here. I don't want to leave.
Okay. Thank you very much. If there's no other business to be brought forth, this body, I clear some meeting adjournments like about 8:40.